Hey, to a seat, a quorum being present. The 2017 Wilmington special town meeting will now come to order. So if you could please sit down, find a seat. If you're standing, please again, find a seat. Non-voters over here to my right. Voters can sit anywhere else throughout the auditorium. And I just asked you to set, uh, to seat, but be seated. But now I'm gonna ask you to rise instead of the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to 2017 Wilmington special town meeting. I would like to point out that all voters should have checked in. Voters and non-voters alike. Voters, you should have been given a yellow lanyard that recognize voters. If you do not have one of these yellow lanyards on, you will not be entitled to vote. Your vote will not be counted today, at today's meeting. So if you did not get one of these lanyards, please proceed back into the hallway and get one where you should have checked in with your street address and precinct. Again, to repeat myself, if you're not a voter, you should be seated to the front right of the auditorium, to the right side, right over here. Again, non-voters can sit anywhere throughout the auditorium. There are four microphones in this auditorium. There's two to the front and two in the back. If you would like to speak at today's meeting, I ask that you please quietly go up to a microphone. If there is a line, I ask that you please patiently wait in line behind whoever is speaking. And you are not gonna allow to address the, um, the assembly here today unless and until you are notified or called on by the moderator, at which point you will have the floor and continue to listen and heed the call of the moderator if I ask you to slow down or stop for a second, if we need a point of clarification or a point of order. At this time, also, I'd like to thank WCTV for filming today's meeting. And I would also like to thank all those volunteers who helped get the, um, this room ready with, I know, George Hooper and his folks get the monitors and those folks who volunteered to take, uh, to take the votes and check people in. You're an important part of this meeting and we thank you very much. And also, while I have everyone's attention, I would be remiss, uh, this is oversight on my part in the spring town meeting, our annual town meeting. We have a, um, a person dear to the town who's retiring in January. And I would like to take the moment to recognize him. And he's walking in through the door, must have heard me talking about him. Fire chief Rick McClellan's gonna be, um, retiring in January, so give him a round of applause. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, there are, um, five listed articles on today's warrant. However, Article One has already been withdrawn by the petitioner, so Article One will not be taken up. So that leaves us with Articles Two, Three, Four, and Five, uh, which will come by random order. We'll tweak to that. Articles Three, Four, and Five are so closely related that we're gonna take those up in order. So if I pull Article Three, Four, or Five, uh, we're gonna take those up. It doesn't matter what order I pull. Say if I pull Five, we're gonna take Three, Four, and Five in that order. So Three, Four, and Five will be taken in order, um, and then we'll take Article Two if that happens to be the second one that comes up. So that's how we're gonna, um, act on our articles here today. Relative to the articles, any and all well-grounded questions and points of inquiry will be allowed at today's meeting. However, uh, any sort of personal attack, uh, dilatory or inflammatory comments, I'm gonna heed in order. Um, so when you're making your comments, please be, keep your comments and, uh, any factual evidence you might have relative and germane to the matter at hand. I would also like to remind everyone today, uh, that today's meeting will be conducted with proper decorum and civility. Uh, we will not be addressing each other by name. We will not be addressing each other across the microphone. Any and all questions will be buy-in through the moderator. So if you have anything to say or any questions you want directed at anyone here in the auditorium, whether you know their name or not, I ask that you please direct the question to me and I will further, um, I will further direct whoever, uh, I judge to be best able to answer that question to answer it. Also, do not use anyone's, uh, proper name, so if you're gonna refer to someone else who had spoken before you, you say this previous speaker. I do not want anyone using any names. All that does is, um, usually foster ill will and bad feelings towards people who have been speaking before you. On to the warrant. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, the Massachusetts, and the manner prescribed in the bylaws of said town, you are hereby directed, notified, and warned the inhabitants of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet and assemble at the Wilmington High School Auditorium, 159 Church Street, in said town of Wilmington, on Saturday, the sixteenth day of December 2017, at 10:30 a.m., then and there to act on the following articles. Mr. Shampoo.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the moderator dispense with further reading of the warrant and take up and make reference to each article by number.
I'll accept that as a motion. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Um, ladies and gentlemen, uh, what we're gonna be voting on now is just to take up, uh, dispense with further reading of the article and take up, um, excuse me, dispense with further reading of the warrant and take the articles up one by one. Uh, do I see any discussion? Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Voted. So again, now we're gonna go on to our random selection. The first, um, article we'll be acting on is gonna be Article Two. Article Two, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 3.4 of the Wilmington zoning bylaws and associated Table 1 principal use regulations as follows, or take any other action related thereto, amend Section 3.4.6 under classification of governmental, institutional, and public service uses, zoning bylaw at page 13, Section 3.4.6, to insert at the existing text of 3.4.6 Hospital and Nursing Homes, before the period punctuation mark the words, including any detox facility as defined as a use of any land, building, structures, or for the purpose of providing detoxification and treatment of alcoholism, drug addiction, or substance abuse services. Also, to amend Table 1 principal use regulations zoning bylaw at page 10, bylaw under classification of governmental, institutional, and public service uses, by amending the line of the text 3.4.6 Hospital and Nursing Homes, to state as follows, 3.4.6 R-10 no, R-20 no, R-60 no, O-55 no, NM no, NB no, GB no, CB no, GISP, HISP, LI no, Site Planner U.R., GWPD." Do I have a, a motion?
Yes, I do, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McCoy.
I, I move to see if the town will vote to amend Section 3.4 of the Wilmington zoning bylaws and associated Table 1 principal use regulations.
Mr. McCoy, is your motion read as it appears in the motion booklet?
Yes, it does, Mr. Moderator.
I'll accept that as a main motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I wanna say thank you for all the folks coming and everybody who's a first-time, uh, individual here at the town meeting. It's fantastic to see you. All right. If we could go, all right. All right, if we can, uh, show, uh, the three slides, I'm gonna explain these, uh, for you, Mr. Moderator. I will get to Article Two, but I'm gonna explain the existing zoning bylaws, so if I could get the definition, please. All right, everybody take a look at 3.4.6. I'm gonna turn that around and it says right now, "Hospitals and nursing homes, hospitals, community health centers, sanitarium, nursing, uh, rest homes, or convalescent home." Right now, this is the existing zoning bylaws that exist today. So right now, you can put any kind of medical facility, drug detox, substance abuse, in every single zone, right now, according to the zoning bylaws. And I'm gonna go back to that in a second. So just give me a second here, all right? And then if you could, so that, I'm gonna refer back to that in a moment, but that is the existing bylaws that exist today. So you can't put any type of medical facility, drug detox, in a general industrial. You can't put it in a, in a light industrial and you can't put it in a, uh, commercial industrial. If you could go to the, uh, next slide, which I believe is the principal use regulations. All right, if you take a look at 3.4.6, now this is what exists today, as the moderator stated, uh, hospital and nursing homes. If you take a look all the way, oh yeah, hey, let me get my cat toy and bring it back to the cat later. So if you could take a look, oh man, oh, all right, if you take a look at that area, so right now, under the present zoning bylaws, all you need to do is get a special permit from the Board of Appeals. If you take a look at principal use regulations, you see what says extensive use right above it, R-10. So if you live in an R-10 zone, that means 10,000 square feet, R-20, R-60. All right, so right now, you can actually put a medical facility or a full drug detox center in all the residential zones. Let's skip over to, uh, NM, which is Neighborhood Mix, was just initiated last year. It's a new zone where they want businesses and residential. If you take a look right across the board, special permit, you see what says all that? SP, SP, SP. So that can go into Neighborhood Mix, your neighborhood business, central business, and general business. Now if you take a look right across where it says no, 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 right now, you can't put a medical facility, general industrial, highway, or LO means light industrial. All right, so if you could, right now, go to the map. Please, thank you. All right, just look at all the pretty colors, folks. The bottom line is, I don't know if this thing is, all right, there it is. All right, if you see, just focus on the yellow and the blue. And if you see that little sliver there, that is where Expudex is and that's the old Sweetheart Plastics. We chose not to, uh, put that as part of the zone, 'cause there was a lot of residential area. Light industrial is very similar to neighborhood business, which is like the less, least restrictive of them all. So take a look at the yellow, the blue, yellow and blue. See all these other colors, folks? All these other colors in the whole town. You can put a full drug detox center, substance abuse, medical facility, you can put that everywhere else, but you can't put it in the blue, the yellow, or that little sliver there. All right, now, if you could go back to the, uh, and I'll talk about Article Two, to the definition, please. All right, let me tell you what prompted Article Two. Believe it or not, it was, uh, a second time relative to Article One. It turned out to be a blessing. I talked to hundreds of folks. Some didn't want a drug detox center or a medical facility that what we were planning to do. They had no issue if it was gonna be in a residential zone. All right, but as time went on, more people come up to me, professionals, residents, and they said, you know, "What you really should do is put everything under one roof, a full medical facility, drug detox." And they said it would be really good to do that, 'cause it would complement one another. I listened to folks and guess what? I listened to those folks out there and that's what they wanted, put everything under one roof and it makes a lot of sense. So right now, with the present zoning bylaws, I can put a drug detox center in all the residential areas, all the business, except for general industrial. For example, on Ballaville Street where the target is, you can't put a drug facility or a medical facility, you can't put any type of hospital, Lahey Clinic. That's insane. You can't do that, but yet I can put one in your yard, as it exists today? Things need to be updated. All right, thank you. Could we go to the, uh, principal use regulations, please? Let me get the cat toy again, thank you. All right, once again, now, folks, take a look, see, this is the existing zoning bylaws, but I'm going to tell you the change. All we're gonna do is flip it. So right now, if you take a look, right now, if you take a look under principal use, remember, go back to 3.4.6, as it exists today, special permit, special permit, all the way across, special permit, no, no, no. We're gonna flip it. See what says all special permit? We're gonna change that to the word no. So it can't go in your neighborhood. It can't go anywhere else other than, now if you take a look, and I know you, I see people shaking their heads, they get it, but I'll explain it again. See what says no, no, under general industrial and highway? We're gonna put the words yes and yes. And we did put the word no in light industrial. So it's not gonna go where the Sweetheart Plastic is or the Expudex in that area. All right, thank you. I'm just gonna continue on. All right. Now I know, it's not a perfect world, and I, and I was very honest at the planning board public hearing. Right across the 362 Main Street, you got Pizza Mia, you have Pizza Mia and the gas station. Well, that's own general industrial. As you go further to the right, where the registry motor vehicle is that's owned by an individual, that's called Central Business District. You can, down the road, put condominiums near, keep that in mind. And then down to the right, and I'll admit, on Wolfham Street where WCTV is, that is also zone general industrial. In the, it's not a perfect world, but it is a lot less invasive to put it in a general industrial zone that abuts residence as opposed to general business, neighborhood business, R-10, R-20, R-60, neighborhood mix. It can go everywhere. All right, so if you could please, go to the, uh, map and keep the map on the whole time. Thank you. And once again, take a look at the map. The blue and the yellow, that is general industrial. So if you take a look at that area, if you take a look, right now, if I go from, say from 3 o'clock to 9 o'clock, that's half the town. Just visualize, take the yellow and the blue and put it right on the, right on the bottom, right over here. It's, it's almost a quarter of the town. And I don't wanna sound like Donald Trump, but it's huge. If you really take a look at it, there is a lot of general industrial, highway industrial in this community, okay? Now, I will, uh, for example, right now, in general business, you know where Uncle Mickey's restaurant is in general business near the Sharshenee School? I can put a drug detox center, medical facility, right where Uncle Mickey's. I can also put it all around the neighborhoods. Do you know where Greg's Roast Beef is on Main Street? That's neighborhood business, a lot less restrictive. I can put, or anybody could put a drug detox, medical facility on that area and plus all the streets around Lake Street in the vicinity. But once again, it's insane. I can't put it on Ballaville Street, Upton Drive, Research Drive, Fordham Road, where it's all general industrial. It makes no sense. All right, now, if I could, just real quick, I took a ride around town, real quick, on Ballaville Street.
Mr. McCoy, just as a point of information, you're at eight minutes, just to let you know.
All right, real quick then, all right, right now on Ballaville Street, there's 181, there's nine vacancies open on Ballaville Street. On Lopez Road, Concord Street, there's 34,000 square feet that is open. We have a lot of massive vacancies and I'll be real quick, 'cause I wanna do a little closing. The bottom line is, there's a lot of vacancies in industrial way, we could fill it with these kind of facilities. Also, there's a lot of broad, uh, broad land out there where you can actually develop. So I'm just hoping everybody would vote yes on the article and I'll just, uh, I'll end it right here, uh, Mr. Moderator. I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCoy. I'm gonna open it up for further discussion. Anyone that wants to further discuss, please go to a microphone. You're gonna have to make room, so if someone in the middle of the aisle has to get out, I ask that you please, uh, aid in them. We're gonna have to file out and file back in like we're back in school. Down front, and ladies and gentlemen, if you care to address the auditorium, I ask that you please state your name and address before each and, each and every time before you speak. I know it seems a little bit monotonous having to do it if you're getting up more than once, uh, but it makes our, uh, our record of the meeting, uh, more clear and precise. So I'm gonna, uh, recognize the, uh, lady down front.
Uh, good morning, everybody. Mary Drew, 8R Dorothy Ave. in Wilmington. Um, couple of things. One, thank you all, um, for the kindness you've shown my family the last month. It's been amazing, so thank you. You all know what I'm talking about. Um, to stick to this particular issue, however, I did listen to everything Mr. McCoy was saying, but it appears to me that the complete intent of this article is discriminatory, uh, to a protected class. And I think you all need to keep that in mind. Secondly, if we ban all medical facilities out there, what does this mean for the other medical needs of the residents of this town? I don't believe this is in the best interest of the town. It, it seems that it's being singled out just because of the threat of a detox center. Um, there is also something called the Dover Act, which will not allow you to discriminate these types of rehab facilities, even if you wanna put them in a residential neighborhood, you really have no choice. Medical facilities are a different thing, I understand, and that's all that this is, is, is a medical facility. We've allowed them for many years in Wilmington. Dentists, chiropractors, doctors' offices, all kinds of, uh, therapies. But because it's this, all of a sudden, everybody wants to put them out in the industrial areas that are not convenient to any resident in the town. So I ask that, you know, emotions aside, which you know this is an emotional issue for me, having lost my son four years ago to a drug overdose, there are not enough beds to help these people that are afflicted. They are afflicted, it is a disease. And instead of showing the world how divisive a town can get over the care of our fellow human beings, what we've done here is show people how unkind we can be. I hope that you look inside your hearts, examine this part of yourself, because this epidemic is not gonna go away. It's only gonna get worse, from all intents and purposes. And instead of being the tipping point and being a shining example to other communities around us, we're doing this. So I urge you to reconsider any previous opinions you have about this. Understand what the full meaning of this article will do to any medical facility trying to open in this town and, and place your vote that way. If, if it's not a conscious thing, see it as a, a town-wide thing. This isn't just about a detox center, it's about all medical facilities. Thank you for listening and God bless you all.
Ladies and gentlemen, down front, please state your name and also, uh, another, uh, point of order. Ms. Drew, thank you very much for sharing that and condolences on the last speaker's son. Uh, but just, I didn't wanna stop you, but, um, please do not refer to anyone by their proper name. Uh, please, you, again, use previous speaker or a previous speaker. Again, just trying to keep, uh, people using each other's names, um, out of the conversation here today. So the gentleman down front, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name's Dave Norton. I'm at 2 Laurel Ave., Wilmington, Massachusetts. I too have had a loved one have it be revived with a Narcom and understand the problem that we're having. However, in this crazy world we live in where churches, uh, bad things happen in schools, I think what we need to do, um, is take a conservative approach here and as, um, one of the previous speakers noted, is move it to an area which is not gonna butt the residential area, because going to previous meetings and seeing that people can walk out of these facilities in the middle of the night, um, on their own and there's nothing they can do to stop them, I think it would be wise to take a conservative approach. Let's get a couple years' worth of data metrics and then make other decisions if we wanna change these. Right now, it is prudent for us to watch over, um, the residents in the town where they're trying to put these. This could be in your backyard, your children running around, uh, your property values, there's a lot of things to consider here. Again, um, I'm sensitive for the subject. I know we need a detox center in this town, um, but I think we ought to be conservative in our approach here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The previous speaker earlier-
Oh, oh, Mr. McCoy, I'm actually, I'm gonna, you have to get behind, uh, that gentleman when I recognize you, I'll give you the floor.
I'm sorry.
Lady in back, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Linda Whitebone. I live at 16 Bond Street in Wilmington. I know it's hard for people to come out today because it's a week before the holidays. However, this is the best Christmas present you can give your children and your grandchildren because it would, um, you know, restrict their exposure to things like this and also, um, it would be safer for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen up back, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Mr. Wilkins. I live at Horton Road. As the last speaker just says, um, you're not gonna hide from this, it's everywhere in the whole town already.
Mr. Wilkins, can I cut you off? Can you just state your first name, a full first name?
My name's Paul Wilkins.
And exact address?
27 Horton Road.
Thank you very much. The floor's yours.
Okay, the last speaker, which he just said, um, it's all around you already. There's no hiding it. And as far as where you wanna locate it, you have train stations here and I'm sure that you guys could make some rules that no one can leave the facility until they got on the train and left. Um, a, a resident has been denied a permit to live on that site because it's a business site already. Mr. Forrest tried to live there and they denied him a residency permit, uh, a few years ago. So that building in the, the lot that is, they're trying to put detox on, um, a man has been denied a living permit to live there. Mr. Forrest is his name, I believe. And anyway, if you can put this facility in my backyard, go ahead. I've been affected by this with a couple of kids and there's no hiding from this. If your family hasn't been affected yet, it will be. Your friends, your cousins, your aunts, someone's gonna be affected by this. And making someone go to the far end of the town when they can't even get around to begin with is, is not a good thing to do. So this thing being located by a train station is a plus, it's not a minus. And when you already voted to not let a man live in a district because it was, uh, zoned as business, I think that's the way it is, man. So I think this should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen down front here, name and address for the record.
Uh, Joe Ribero, 2 Judith Road. Uh, I just wanna read a letter, uh, to the editor from Kevin Branda. He cannot be at this meeting today, but I ask that this be read. Uh, "The proposal to cite a detoxification facility in North Wilmington has garnered much attention and anguish, as it should for anyone with concerns about maintaining the character of residential neighborhoods and most importantly, giving careful thought to where such a facility would best be located in our town. As a former chairman of the planning board and co-chair of the 2001 Town Master Plan Committee, I can attest that a huge amount of effort was put into developing the town's master plan. The development of the plan encompassed extensive public meetings, a large and diverse master plan committee, the integration of a wide array of important goals. The clear message from the people was the plan needed to promote the town's family-oriented sense of community and protect and preserve the town's many assets. A core element of the plan was promoting five neighborhood activity centers and the plan specifically included this goal for the area in North Wilmington at and near Middlesex Avenue and the MBTA train station. The intention was and is to promote attractive, mixed-use, pedestrian-friendly environments. The recommendation for this area, quote, "As with the town center, appropriate uses in North Wilmington include retail, offices, and housing, including townhouses and condominiums. Design guidelines should require small setbacks, parking in the rear or on the side, and in pedestrian amenities such as sidewalks. Redevelopment of the industrial area for office uses or encumbered space should be encouraged and zoning should be modified to permit such redevelopment," unquote. It is easy to see how this area was targeted for these uses, as it already has a transit station and many locally-owned businesses which are frequently, frequented by the town's residences. "Encumbered space" is a planning term intended to promote emergence of a smaller unit, locally-owned businesses. The clear goal is to establish an area where residents and others could go get a haircut, have a bagel, go to the bank, connect to public transit, all in an area conveniently and safely connected by attractive walkways and streetscaping."
Mr. Barrow, I'm gonna interrupt you for one second. I just wanna make a point of clarification to this body here. We're talking about a zoning bylaw that is not just effective of one area of land, and I will let you finish. Uh, and I understand that, uh, that one area of land is what, what led most of you to be here and it would actually lead the Article Two to be put on the warrant, but you, everyone should understand that it's, it's a bigger view, it's relative to not just one spot in town, but it's gonna be an overall, it's gonna be an overhaul of the zoning bylaw. So I will let you continue reading it, 'cause it's a specific example, but what I want everyone to remember when you get up to speak is we're gonna, I'm gonna keep you between these lanes. If we start trying to bear out into what's currently, uh, before the planning board, I'm gonna call you out of order. If we talk about the petition, what, a petition that's pending in front of a planning board and the specifics of that, I'm gonna call you out of order. This, this assembly here has no authority over what's before the planning board and I can, and a lot of you know this and who were at the, uh, the meeting on November 30th, um, the specific track to land at 362 Middlesex Avenue will not be affected by this at all relative to zoning changes. So I just wanna make that clear. So if anyone starts heading down the avenue, we're talking specifically about the track to land at 362 Middlesex Avenue, I'm gonna call you out of order and ask you to take a seat, but I will continue the reading it, because you haven't gone down that road. I just wanted to make that clear, so you can go ahead and keep reading.
Thank you. "The parcel at 362 Middlesex Avenue constitutes-"
That was a bad place to start. Bad place to start.
Well, let's go. "Citing of a detoxification facility at this location runs completely against the recommendations in the master plan and will of the, in the will of the neighborhood."
Mr. Barrow, I'm, I'm gonna cut you off, but I, I think we all get the gist of the article relative to, uh, we, town has a master, if you, you can correct me if I'm wrong for putting words in my mouth, the town has a master plan that we came up with and we should, and it appears that some, the zoning bylaws as currently constituted, you're trying to say, aren't in conformance with those, with that master plan? And without specific referencing 362 Middlesex Avenue, which is the, which is currently before the planning board?
I believe so.
Okay. So if, if that's it, if you have anything else to say, you still have, you still have the ground, but I don't want you, I don't want, if we're gonna, if this, the rest of this is about 362 Middlesex Avenue, I'm gonna ask that you stop reading it and just more so bring back to, uh, the general, uh, either the feasibility or your desirability or undesirability of Article Two.
Well, I'm for, uh, I'm, you know, I'm for Article Two. I think it's just, uh, I'm, I'm all for detox centers, I just think it's just the wrong for detox centers, I just think it's just the wrong location.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I cut you off from reading the letter, you're doing a good job. I just want to keep, make sure this, this meeting stays on track. I'm actually going to recognize, I'll come to you, recognize the lady down front first, she's been standing here for quite some time. Ma'am?
Linda Toth, 54, Fearenser Drive. If you look at the map, look at the northernmost yellow-blue-brown area, you will see a white residential area. That is surrounded by all kinds of industrial park area, front, back, going down Andover Street. We already have a multi-unit area going on about a quarter of a mile from the end of Fearenser Drive, which will add traffic. You are going to put or change the article to put any kind of medical facility, detox facility in those areas. If anybody has ever been on 125 and Andover Road, you will know that there is already extensive traffic coming down that road. You are against putting a detox center in a residential area, so how can you say it's okay to put something where there is residents at the northern tip? I agree that we need someplace to go, but I think Article Two is going to put people in and surrounded by industrial area, also at in jeopardy or, you know, having facilities put there that people in the major part of Wilmington are against. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to come down front to Mr. McCoy, then I'm going to go up to you because I believe Mr. McCoy has a point of clarification or is answering a question.
Yeah, it's a point of personal privilege, my name was mentioned three, four speakers ago, information that was not correct relative to the zoning.
Mr. McCoy, just, I'm going to ask you to state your name and address every time before you speak, just like everybody else.
I'm sorry, Michael McCoy, 11 Treasure Hill Road. All right, thank you. It was mentioned earlier that if a new doctor or new dentist or a new chiropractor must move their, must open up in a general industrial, I encourage not to take my word for it, ask that of the town council. It's called professional use, so if you have a new doctor or a new dentist or new chiropractor under professional use, that person can open a business in the existing zoning bylaws as they sit today, even if you vote yes in Article Two because it's professional use. Now, if you're going to stay overnight, above overnight, then it's going to be the new zoning is general industrial. And just to clarify, three nursing homes, Wilmington Health Center and all the doctors and dentists in the town of Wilmington, they're grandfathered, they can expand their use to whatever they want. I just need to clarify, any new professional coming in can absolutely go in a res, commercial, can go in a general business area. It's not overnight. And if you want for elaboration, you should have the town council ask his opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCoy. Gentlemen down back, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Excuse me, Michael Gray, 29 Faulkner Ave, bit of a cold beer with me. I've been very emotional on this topic, I'm going to try to take it down a notch, different tact. I understand that people are afraid of things that they don't necessarily understand. In this case, I think that's it. I've dedicated my life to helping people in recovery from all walks of life, name it. The two biggest groups I deal with, with keeping their confidentiality are veterans and abuse survivors from various ways. They're not criminals. Addiction's not a crime. The drugs are here, they're here right now. The numbers of 64,000 people died last year in this country from drug overdoses, that number's not correct. When you have unresponsive, heart failure, respiratory, et cetera, they don't get put in that category. I'll bet my life that number's 150,000. Next year, it'll probably double that. I've knock in probably 25 people in my life because, and again, I don't come from, I'm not in recovery. I didn't use drugs, I'm not one of those people, which is harsh, not the term I keep hearing over and over again, junkie, which just makes my blood boil because it's not okay, you can't call people that. I've talked to the ACLU, the ADA, the attorney generals, all over this right now, by the way, so this whole thing might just get tossed. But we can't be afraid of helping people. I've never met a person in recovery who, I mean, maybe they had a crime somewhere else in their life, whatever, but a lot of people have for different reasons. The addiction's not the crime, they deserve help, the drugs are here right now, people have overdosed in this town very recently, they need help. You don't put someone off in the shadows, someone else will fix it. Something has to be done, somebody has to do something about those people. Something is being done. Article One's gone, so we don't even need to talk about that. We need to help people where they are. I dropped off a kid recently at the Dimmick in Roxbury. Anybody ever been there? Kid's 100 pounds, soaking wet, scared to death. It's the only place that would take him. Took me about two days to find him a bed, dragged him in there, vomited all over me. He hadn't, couldn't, he didn't have his faculties bought him at all. Went in there, they didn't treat him right, he went out and killed himself. One of those people. Maybe if he was in a residential neighborhood where he was not in danger, like in Roxbury, well, Fall River, Worcester, Chicopee, it's putting dust in the corn, pretending it's not in the room. The people need help, they deserve help, federal law protects these people, those people. We have a duty to help save lives. I'm sorry if it's unsavory, if you don't like it, if your family hasn't been affected by it, if your kids haven't been affected by it. They haven't been affected by it yet. I have an 11-year-old, she very well could get in a sports injury, break around, go down the path of addiction. People I talk to, professional athletes, Chris Harrington, I can't say names, but I mean, not here, just at professional athletes, they've gotten hurt, they've taken medicine, takes one pill, they go down the path of addiction. Kids smoke marijuana, kids recreationally using things as cocaine, you don't, you want to pretend they don't use these things? They do. At a high school, college party, he just recently, last week, took a hit of cocaine, which is awful, I don't condone that by any means. He thought he was at a party doing one recreational thing, 100% fentanyl, dead. Knock in doesn't work. I have knock in, I have eight doses on me right now. I've used eight doses and the person still died. I had a 15-year-old kid die in my arms. Maybe I should have looked in his eyes before he died and said, you know what, people don't want you. You're the problem, you're a criminal, no crime. He hasn't been convicted of anything. Dead kid. Talk to the parents about that. It's not okay, we're not going to stand for it and we have the backing of the federal government to stop it. The stigma needs to go and as a lifelong resident in this town, I own a home, I have a child, I want to help everybody's kids. Maybe my kid will never be affected by it, I'm still going to help your kids. So now I get a little emotional there, I'm sorry. I want to work as a community, I want to build a bridge and let's get to a point where we can help people. No one's walking away from these facilities AMA and going to steal your lawnmower. If they walk away AMA, which they're right to do because they're not criminals held on bond, they can do that and they're gone and not going to bother you. There's no backing, no proof ever to support. People walking away from facilities and committing crimes, prove it. That's all I have to say. Can we please come together and try to save lives? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gray. Please, the lady up back has the microphone on the floor.
Hi, I'm Jay Burns, nine Pine Wood Road. After work, I worked in the medical field for over 25 years and with the ongoing changes we're seeing and the privatization we're seeing within the medical field in healthcare to meet society's healthcare needs, Article Two is the best measure and until the state government can develop the specific criteria and protocols of oversight and operations of a variety of facilities. Charlie Baker has recently taken on that charge to do so and I think Article Two, sorry, am I too close? I think Article Two would be the best measure in protecting the residential areas of the community from, from just what a 24-hour business may entail. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lady down front, please state your name and address for the record.
Michelle Coridi O'Feeny, five Arlene Ave. Thanks for letting me speak. I have been a lifelong resident of Wilmington. I think a lot of the focus here today is pulling at the heartstrings and making everyone here appear to be unkind and empathetic to all that cause. I myself have a friend that her son has been brought back from Narcom three times, okay? I, I, she's been on, on Nightline at night, okay? I know her pain and I know what she's been through. And I look around this room and I don't see one person here that I could ever label as unkind and I know many of you. I think that there's a, someone's trying to make this appear as a divisive line and it isn't. This is not a divisive line. I think almost everyone in this room wants to, wants to help people.
Okay, come to order, order, order. Hold on one second. Okay, go ahead.
I do think everyone wants to help people and I just think it needs to be directed to some of those areas. Now, when I was purchasing a home, I've spent, I've had many residences, I've lived in Hoboken, New Jersey, I've lived in Chelsea, Massachusetts. When I looked for a home, I, I didn't look near an industrial area, okay? I looked for a neighborhood because I wanted my children to live in a neighborhood. I knew the risks if I did, I looked at Fearenser Drive, I looked at some of those places and I knew they were residential areas and I knew the problems that came along with that. I, when I looked at this neighborhood, I have a 10-year-old son who a couple, well, now he's 12, a couple of years ago, wanted to walk to Eli's, "Mom, can I go to Pizzamia? We want to go to Pizzamia." Okay, I'm not going to feel comfortable having, now he's 12, pretty soon he's going to be taking the train in. Like, I, I feel uncomfortable with the location and I know we're not supposed to talk about that, but that right now is another location in one of those red areas tomorrow. I wish I had spoken sooner, I wish we knew about this or had this meeting prior to the, to the 362 parcel. I wish I knew about this meeting when they put a halfway house across from the Woburn Street School, I'm sorry, not a halfway house, for troubled, angered teens across from the Woburn Street School that the entire duration of both my children attending there, I had to be concerned that one of those angered teens was going to do something tragic, okay? Now they're not there. I just found out there's another halfway house that was put at the end of Federal and Concord. I just think that we need to be more aware of where these things are going. I, I, I think we do need a detox facility. I'm not blind, I am worried every day that one of my children will be one of those kids and there's, they're not those kids. I haven't heard anyone use any derogatory terms that have spoken up about changing the zoning laws. Not one person has said that. The amount of empathy that's in this room, I think, is, is uniting everyone. I just think it's a matter of where we put them and I do think that the zoning laws, they do seem pretty preposterous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lady down front, state your name and address for the record.
Devon Drew, 35 Moore Street. Thank you very much for, for listening to us all out today. I did want to speak about Article Two because I do believe it's still, although previous speakers believe that they have found a loophole because Article One was found to be discriminatory and a violation of the ADA, they feel like this Article Two because they include all different medical facilities in it, it is, is not discriminatory now because it doesn't specifically state that detox facilities are not going to be allowed in these areas. However, in a court of law, if this were to be taken to court and after it has been approved, it would still be found discriminatory because they're going to look at the history and what prompted this article to be presented to the board. I know Mara Healy has been looking at it, I know she has in previous towns when they have tried to made, make zoning changes to their bylaws because of a detox center or halfway house or recovery house coming into their town, she has shot it right down as soon as it comes to her table. So I do believe a lot of this is futile. I'm sorry, I know a lot of people don't want it in their neighborhood, but I do believe that a lot of this, even if you do vote for it, it's going to get shot down in the long run. Second of all, I would like to point out that roughly 9% of Americans do suffer from an opiate addiction by the latest statistics. In a state with 6.81 million people, that means 619,000 people currently in the state are suffering from addiction. Right now, I couldn't find the latest numbers on how many detox beds there are, but in 2014, there were roughly just a little bit over 4,000. Now, assuming that in the past three years, maybe that has doubled, we'll put it at 10,000, that means that at any given time, the 619,000 people that are in this state in active addiction, only 1.63% of them can actually receive treatment. So I believe that any attempts at restricting access to that treatment or the opening of these kinds of facilities that will treat those people is, you know, going, only going to make your neighborhood less safe in the long run. Because what's, what's going to make more of a difference to your children? One detox center, one town where you're going to restrict access to the detox centers to the outskirts of town or 619,000 people walking around not able to get treatment? I think that you should take that into consideration as well when you're looking at protection of your kids if you're going to use that as, as an excuse to vote for Article Two. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen up back.
Dave Cruzay, Bowwell Street. I'm going to quote a reading from our church three weeks ago, from the Gospel of Matthew. Jesus said to his disciples, "Come, you who are blessed by my Father, inherit the kingdom prepared for you for the foundations of the world. For I was hungry and you gave me food; I was thirsty and you gave me drink; a stranger and you welcomed me; naked and you clothed; ill and you cared for me; in prison and you Then he will answer them, "Lord, when did we see you indeed?" Jesus said, "Amen I say to you. Whoever did this will release of my brothers of mine. You did it for me and that's why I'm voting for the detox facility, any place, any time, anywhere in town. God bless."
Thank you very much. Down front, lady down front, name and address.
Thank you. My name is Shawna Smith, I live at 15 Faulkner Ave in Wilmington. As a previous speaker said, I definitely think that there isn't someone or anyone here that isn't kind or empathetic to the opioid situation or any addiction. I do notice that I am one of the younger folks here and I can understand that maybe people look at me and think, well, she doesn't understand that we're worried for our children, we're worried for our grandchildren. But I just want to remind people that statistically, those with mental illness and substance abuse or addiction are no more violent or prone to violent acts than those who do not have those kind of issues. I have struggled with mental illness and issues with alcohol and I can say that a large part of my recovery was being able to have my treatment in a community where I grew up, where I had the support of psychiatric professionals, substance abuse professionals in the community. I think it's very stigmatizing, continues to stigmatize people when you want to locate these individuals on the outskirts of town. I know for many, it doesn't seem like there's a distinction between having them in a residential area or having them in an industrial area, at least we have a detox. And yes, no matter what, I, I want a detox, we need a detox in Wilmington. I've had countless classmates of mine die, I can't even count them on two hands. And I apologize, I'm not a good public speaker, but I feel like I had to speak today.
You're doing great.
Oh, thank you. But, thank you. I just feel like since I am one of the younger people here, I'm not dismissing anything. The older generation has to say, obviously, we need this and these people should be welcomed in the community, be a part of our neighborhood. They need to feel less stigmatized and as if they're being embraced and welcomed into treatment, not pushed aside because we're worried about them committing violent acts or being a part of the town. Again, statistically, those with mental illness and addiction are not any more likely to be violent or commit crimes when they're in recovery. I'm a mental health professional, actually, so I'm kind of have experience on both sides of the coin. I apologize, this couldn't be more articulate, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Gentlemen up back, name and address for the record, please.
Michael Shea, 31 Park Street. My student spoke at the beginning of all of this when we had the meeting at the town hall and I told you is all of my troubles with my family and having to have dealt with this. And I ran around to everybody, all the local police, chief up there, chief over here, and everybody in between, and I tried to get my brother help. He was a North Andover Fire Lieutenant. He probably saved more people than anyone in this room. He's probably dealt with more overdoses than anybody in this room, but he still fell and succumbed to that. And it was a 40-year struggle, wasn't something overnight, you know? And I just feel, first of all, I feel kind of insulted that I heard people up there throw out the NIMBY, you know? Not in my backyard people. Well, you know, when I went home from that meeting, a dog stepped on a needle in Andover and had to be resuscitated, you know? It was just a puppy, but nonetheless, that needle came from somewhere. I've heard people say that addiction is not a crime. I agree with that 100%, but possession is. Possession is a felony. I also know that there are at least 50 beds open right now at Tewksbury State Hospital. I know that- Um, I know that because a friend of mine is a nurse there. Maybe more, maybe seventy-five. But, um, to hear people say that this is out of the goodness of heart, of the heart, and to help people, I think rings a little hollow. I believe that this is more about money, this particular issue. And, um, I've heard people say, "Don't demonize people with addictions. You're putting a scarlet letter on people like that." Well, you're not putting it on them, they put it on themselves. And addiction, you can call it a disease, but a disease is like polio, it's something that you just got, you had no, you didn't stick a needle into your arm and develop polio on your own accord. You were an unfortunate soul that got that. And I also heard people being demonized, "Don't demonize the addict," but then the people who were worrying about the loss of value of their homes, you know, some people threw out a number of ninety thousand dollars. Well, why are these short few people in this little cluster demonized for being concerned about the property values and their children? And their children! Their children that they're trying to raise in this town. You know, they're walking their kids down Shady Lane Drive, and they have a big concern, a very big concern. This is their children, they're innocent. I don't believe that a lot of people that are addicted are innocent. They chose this path, and though, um, I don't want to appear unkind to them...
Mr. Shea, just, I just, I kind of want to bring this back in. I under, I, I think I understand what you're, I kind of, we all got the point of what you're trying to say, but can you kind of bring that back into how this interplays with the zoning bylaw? I, I mean, I'm, I'm getting, you're, we're talking about addiction, which we all understand is a real problem, but we're talking about that being in a specific zone, so if you could just tie it back up for me, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I just assume, I just hope that everybody votes against this, or for this article as written in support of Mr. McCoy. I don't know whether I've said it properly or not, but I hope they support the article that the selectmen proposed, because it needs to be in another place. This is not the place to have this. It really isn't. And again, these people are being put in harm's way, and they're only a small minority of people that are taking the hit for the rest of the town.
Thank you very much. You have over five minutes. Thank you. Going to recognize the young lady down front, uh, state your name, because I believe you have a rebuttal. Please state your name and address.
Devon Drew, thirty-five Moore Street. Um, I would just like to make a point that a previous state or, a previous speaker just was talking about, um, that addiction is actually classified by the Medical Association as a brain disease, so it is actually a disease, not a choice. Um, I just wanted to clarify that. Second of all, um, as far as the open beds in, in the area at Tewksbury State, the reason why there are open beds in some areas and, and you believe that people have access to them all the time, there's actually restrictions on many of the beds in, in the neighborhood, um, in the closest areas. If you have any sort of criminal background, if you've been arrested before, if, some of them are female or male only, and that's one further hurdle that people with addiction have to face when they're trying to find a bed. So therefore, a facility of this kind in this area would actually be beneficial to our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Going to go to the gentleman down front here, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is John Goggan, I live at twenty-eight Indian Road. And, um, I still haven't made up my mind yet, so I do have some questions, I just want to clarify on, on the zoning. First is that this doesn't ban, um, any centers within the town. It just, um, you know, it just changes the zoning and moves it around. Um, is, is, maybe I could, okay, okay.
Are you asking a question?
Yes, I am.
So was you agree with the question, again?
Yes, I'm just confirming that, um, it's not a total town-wide ban of what I look at.
No, it just changes the zoning bylaws relative to where it can go.
Okay. One thing that, um, uh, my wife works as a, um, home health aide, and, and I know that there's differences between a detox facility and all different types of facilities, and I, and I mean, a lot of it would depend on how it's managed. Is it a locked facility? You know, for example, um, one of the places she works, she works with handicapped, um, people in public housing, and, um, you know, near there. And again, um, there is a, um, halfway house, and they're probably, you know, the nicest people in the world, but it, uh, I know some of the elderly residents feel threatened by having that right next to their, um, their facility. Um, I don't see how anything, I used to live on Faulkner Ave., I don't see how anything like that could go into the Red R-ten. Um, I mean, I would, I would, especially an overnight facility, I mean, I would have to say, treat that as a nursing home. So however, we're, we're setting up our nursing homes and other overnight facilities, I, I agree that this is the type of, uh, place it should be. Other than that, uh, we have, we have to write, uh, or change, do the zoning for any type of situation, you know, we don't, may not have realized it ten years ago that, that this was happening. I know, um, I've had friends that have lost kids, and I know there's a great need, um, to get, um, people into, um, you know, that want to get help into, uh, some kind of detox facility. Now, I'm not sure how long the waiting lists are, but I do realize there's a need, and I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't want to ban it. So, um, you know, I think that's one thing to consider, and, and I think that I'm, I'm moving toward a, you know, keeping it in town, but, you know, moving it away from, uh, the dense housing, uh, areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, can we ask the planning board for their recommendation at this time?
The planning board has recommended, uh, disa-
Can we have them speak on, on their recommendation?
Okay. Mr. Sorrentino?
Mike Sorrentino, one Curtis Street, um, chairman of the planning board. Channing Board, the planning board, uh, by a vote of three to two, voted disapproval. Just like what's going on today, we had a very civil debate about how to move forward on this. Some of us felt very strongly about including nursing homes and care facilities in the industrial areas. We do, um, I was really not in favor of that. We thought, um, this is something that needs to be discussed, we think it needs to come forward and have this nice discussion that we're having today, but, uh, let's, let's be careful, it is a zoning issue. And the area that would, that people are referring to, um, I just want to remind people that in years past, the planning board tried to rezone that area as an overlay district, so, and if you, that would be closest to, like, uh, what was referred to as an NM, uh, mixed-use neighborhood district, and it was voted down twice by the residents of town, um, at town meeting. Other than that...
Thank you. There's a lady out back, please state your name and address for the record.
Eileen Calvo, twenty-three Chestnut Street. On that topic of the previous speaker was mentioning, what is that area zoned as?
The current zoning area of...
Um, Middlesex Avenue across from Eli's, where the proposed detox facility would be located.
Well, well, first, first of all, just to, again, just to step back, what the, you, you do know that the vote taken here today has no effect on that.
I'm just trying to clarify, yeah.
So it's vote, it's zoned, it's zoned, Mike, it's general business.
General business.
General business, here, and general business from down front, so it's general business.
So, general business, and this article today, it is currently, um, zoned as SP, so special permit would be required.
Correct.
And this, and this actual article would therefore change it so that it would not be allowed in that area, under general business. Correct?
Correct. In the future, but not this, like I said before, three sixty-two Middlesex Avenue is grandfathered.
It is grandfathered.
Any vote we take here today has no effect on it. They, their site plan is into the planning board, the planning board will act on it. As Mrs. Sorrentino said on the November thirtieth meeting, it will likely usher her from the planning board into the, uh, the zoning board of appeals, and it'll go, and will proceed accordingly. So even if this is voted in the affirmative today, and we accept Article Two, three sixty-two Middlesex Avenue will continue as is, and there is still the possibility of a detox center going in three sixty-two Middlesex Avenue.
Great, thank you for the clarification.
Lady down front, state your name and address, please.
Stacy Murphy, nine Christine Drive. I just want to, you know, say, I think more and more, we all need to educate ourselves. Um, addiction is a disease, and they are not criminals, they're not going to break into your home. Needles are found everywhere here in town, every day. Our children are already exposed to it, and to be quite honest with you, most of the children are probably experimenting. What does rezoning do to help? Nothing. No matter where in town this gets placed, it would affect someone and someone's neighborhood. So I just think we all need to really think about what we're doing here today. Thank you.
Thank you, lady out back.
Patricia Xavier, forty Oakdale Road. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about this article because clearly it impacts our community a lot. Throughout the discussion, we have heard a lot about the need to be compassionate for those who oppose the allocation, oddly, and also that obviously, we've heard that people are saying, that those who oppose the allocation obviously have not been impacted by the disease of addiction. So I just want to address these two points. I wholeheartedly agree with the need to be compassionate. I work hard every day to share the importance of being compassionate with my own children, as well as with all the students I am fortunate to teach every day. I want to stress that compassionate needs to be shown for all, not just those dealing with addiction. Putting a detox in a residential neighborhood, or in an area that abuts a residential neighborhood, would not be considered, could not be considerate to other residents, many of who have lived in that neighborhood all their life, and have other certain conditions or disabilities that would be significantly impacted by having a business that is open twenty-four hours a day. So as a previous speaker referred to those dealing with addiction as a protected class, there are also other protected classes, um, people, residents, current residents living there all their life that have other disabilities, that would qualify them to be a protected class as well. Also, as a previous speaker said, "I'm sure you can make a rule that they can't leave the facility." This simply is not true. You cannot make people stay against their will. The notion that if we oppose this location, um, we have not been impacted by addiction certainly is not true. While I don't want to speak for all neighbors, I can tell you that I have a very close member, family member, who did suffer with addiction and sadly died as a result of this addiction. I am compassionate and have seen firsthand the struggles addicts go through. I know that they need help, but we can't help some at the expense of others. Let's find a location that's safe for all and compassionate for all.
Lady down front, I see you have a non-voter tag on, in order to speak, but you have to get leave of meeting by a voter, so a voter has to give up their time. Can you please come to the microphone and give her your time? Just state your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Karen Briggs, uh, I live at eighteen West Street in Wilmington. This is my sister who lives here at times, just not registered to vote here.
Thank you very much. You have the floor.
Thanks. Um, I am currently a resident of Somerville, but I lived here for the first eighteen years of my life, and I'm here with my family. Um, I have very strong feelings about detox facilities, but, um, I just want to talk a little bit about Article Two. I think regardless of your feelings, it's probably not the best way to address this issue. I think there was intended to be an Article One, uh, up for discussion today, but it was removed as a few previous speakers have mentioned, um, due to concerns of discrimination. Um, sorry, am I...
Come around to the front, yeah.
Okay.
It should, at least.
Sorry.
Come closer.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, thanks. Um, I'm an architect, I design supportive housing, um, and that includes things like rehab facilities, but it also includes, um, elderly housing, supportive housing for victims of domestic violence, veterans housing, and not all of those things would be affected by this, but a lot of medical facilities, um, sorry, I think I'm really doing bad with the microphone, um, particularly nursing homes are covered under this legislature, and, um, a previous speaker referred to this as, uh, a conservative move, uh, let's take a conservative approach to who we're allowing to be around our children. And it just, doesn't strike me as a conservative move to, um, ban a really wide group of medical facilities from not only residential districts, but from business districts, and instead move them to industrial. If you consider what the facility that most of the people here are concerned about, an overnight medical facility, um, if you consider what industrial uses versus what residential uses, um, I think you might think that it fits better in residential, but even if you're opposed to that, you can consider business districts separately from that. And, um, I just wanted to refer to, um, when a, when a previous speaker said, if you're concerned about a new dentist or a new small family practice moving to Wilmington and not being able to work in the business district as a result of this, that you can put through a special permit and, or you can be a professional practice. I think that what those are describing are loopholes to a, to a piece of legislature that is really trying to exclude one certain facility, but as a result, is going to end up excluding a lot of things that I think people might want to consider, whether or not they really want to exclude from their town in the long term.
You okay? Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Tom Manager, um, like to speak?
Just want to make, uh, one particular point, uh, that I think needs clarification here. There's been some discussion about, uh, the prospect of, uh, this article, if it is to, if it does pass, impacting, uh, facilities like, uh, doctors' office, dentists, chiropractors, uh, that is a separate, there is a separate section under the bylaw that is referenced as, uh, business and professional office, and that particular category references offices, uh, office of a business profession, uh, medical office, and outpatient clinic, including laboratory incidental thereto, uh, and other office uses. So essentially, the divide here is that, uh, with respect to the article that is before you, uh, if this passes, uh, it will not allow medical facilities where there is an overnight stay involved. For facilities, medical facilities where there is not an overnight stay, it's an outpatient arrangement, uh, that would not be affected by the change, uh, in this, uh, proposed change in this particular article. But I would point out that, uh, if the intent is to remove detox facilities and other facilities that may be considered inappropriate, uh, to be near residential zones, if that is the real impetus for this article, uh, essentially, the passage of this article is just shifting , uh, those impacts to other neighborhoods. As one of the prior speakers noted, the Fierenza Drive area and Blueberry and all those roads and neighborhoods up there would be affected, uh, potential neighborhoods that abut the Fordham Road area would be affected, so you're really not, uh, solving the problem for residents at large, you're essentially moving the potential impacts to other neighborhoods in town.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen down front, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Carl Segal, seven Lawrence Court. I'll, I'll start by saying I'm all in favor of increasing the number of tools available to people with substance abuse, and I do not speak against the town having a detox But I, I work as an electromechanical engineer in the solar industry, and I'll speak a little bit about tools, and the... bit about tools and the town has a tool in the zoning bylaw. I don't go to fix solar equipment at a wind turbine because it's not an appropriate place to fix solar equipment. There are appropriate places to put tools and to put facilities and there are less appropriate places to put those same facilities. Previous speakers spoke about, we should be careful about what we ban from the town and I don't see that we're, that Article Two is trying to ban anything from the town. It's just trying to say, "This is an appropriate place for this particular facility and this is not an appropriate place for this facility." And I think the townspeople have the right to speak and say, "This is how I see where I'm going to lay out my tools in my toolbox in my town." And I, like I said, I speak in favor of increasing the amount of tools in the medical facilities and the, and the, and the resources available to help people with these issues and other issues as well. But that doesn't mean that everything is appropriate in every place. If I were to want to fix diesel trucks at my house, that would be inappropriate. My neighbors would probably not like that. So there are appropriate places within the zoning bylaw and that's how we develop these tools and that's why we have a master plan, that's why we have a planning board, that's why we have a zoning board of appeals, which I spent many years on. I know how these things work and this is just the exercise of us deciding which place is a better place for this particular tool. I'm offended when people tell me that because I might speak in favor of this article or if I spoke against this article, that I'm against facilities of this sort. I'm not. I'm not unsympathetic to the need for this facility. I'm just sympathetic to the fact that we have a democratic process that allows the people to speak and say, "This is something we think is appropriate here and this is something we think is appropriate there." That's all.
Lady down front here, she's been standing up for quite some time.
Kim McNeely, 9 Shady Lane Drive. This is really hard for me to speak. I'm going to talk to you guys today about facts, what I know, what my family has dealt with. My sister's been on heroin for 12 years. It started in the early 2000s with OxyContin. So my family knows the struggle and the pain of every day, every time the phone rings. Is this it? Is she dead? So I can tell you, every time we sent her to a detox, she did not want to go. It was either court-ordered or my family was going to cut her off, so she went. And she would go into detox and she would make friends and one time she came out with a boyfriend. She would have new suppliers and it was networking for her and they can leave whenever they want and she would leave whenever she wanted to. And if she couldn't get home to where her dealer was, she would find and use in the town. I can tell you, my sister has committed B and Es in every town she went to a detox. That is a fact and it's unfortunate because it's four towns. We had four separate court cases and they were all during the day because we're all at work during the day and that's when her and her friends would commit their crimes. She's, this is the best. She also ran out of money one time to buy heroin. So she went to detox knowing they would give her either Suboxone or Methadone so she wouldn't kick hard and get sick and she would leave with a script and then, you know, wait, when she got enough money, she would go get more heroin. So I know the epidemic. I'm for Article Two. To me, if we really want to help these people, why are we going to pop up these little 50-bed detoxes all throughout town? Let's think big. We're giving them more land. Let's build a big facility, more beds, mental health. I believe it starts with mental health. I mean, we need preventative at this point. So I think if we had under one roof, I can't tell you how many times my sister would go to the same detoxes because she knew they were a joke and it wasn't until we threw her in mass gen that they got her into a 90-day program and then a sober house. So all I'm saying is let's think big, let's build a massive facility, the best doctors, nurses, hundreds of beds, mental health and do it right. The zoning needs to be changed. I've lived it, I know it and I thought I came to Wilmington to get away from it. So that's all I have to say. I support Article Two.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen out back, name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Peter Malarkey, 43 Oakdale Road. I, I prepared a whole bunch of stuff I was going to go over here, but in order to expedite this process a little more, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I'm going to read something from, from a post that was on the Heroin Is Killing My Town Facebook page regarding the specific site, 362, I know you don't want to talk about that, so I'll, but.
Don't talk. Just make it more general.
Yep, I got it.
I get it. It's, it's more general because this, this article is more general. It's relative to residential areas.
But it's actually more specific to this meeting and I quote, "As long as it gets built, be happy." The Lowell Clinic is in an office park type setting and it is a great building and set up beautifully. We'd need more of these places. So I don't know why we're fighting this." Right from the Heroin Is Killing My Town Facebook page. They even acknowledge that it's okay to have industrial areas. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady down front, state your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Drew, 8R Dorothy Ave. Couple of the previous speakers, I'm so terribly sorry that you had to go through all that with your sister. I know firsthand how hard it is and you question every decision they make, you question every decision you make. I will say this, every addict is individual in their approach to recovery and, and how they get help, how they're able to get help based on their health insurance, their mental state. There's a lot of things that go into it, okay? And I also want to address the previous speakers that are upset, that feel like we do not believe that they have kind hearts because they're doing this. That is simply not true. I know that everybody comes to this issue with the best of personal intentions. I think that we do need to educate each other on what that means, okay? And I think the reason I've always got up and spoke out about this is because I know exactly what that means. I know how much self-esteem issues they face when they're trying to get any kind of help.
I think I know what you're trying to do.
I know this. I saw it in my son and it hindered his recovery and did not help it in any way, shape or form. I think all of us as a whole, not just people that oppose this or people that afford this, we need to do better. We all need to do better and I include myself in that, okay? So please don't think that I hold anything against you or, or think that you're unkind or awful people. I don't, okay? I really don't. I've lived in this town my whole life. I know how wonderful it is. I've witnessed and benefited personally from the kindness of the people in this town and I still believe in that. I just truly, truly believe that we need to rethink why we are doing this and what it means for everybody in the town, everybody. And as far as keeping your children safe, the best way you can do that is to gently and thoroughly stay on top of their mental health, stay on top of education for this. You are never going to hide them from this, not with 21,07 people in the state of Massachusetts died from this last year. It's everywhere, it's all around you, it's not going away. So I say, instead of saying banning them all, including detox centers out to industrial areas, why didn't we just say, "Now we can allow them in industrial areas," okay? I don't understand the need to ban. So I guess that's my real problem with this article, so I am not in favor of it and I understand and respect you if you are. No hard feelings, this is a process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go down front to Ms. Sorrentino and then I'll recognize.
Again, Mike Sorrentino, 1 Curtis Street, Chairman of Planning Board. I just wanted to point out a couple of things as Chairman of Planning Board. Just remind everybody, this is a zoning article we're discussing. Planning Board reviews things as far as site plan review. We do not review people's business plans. So where something goes, it's, the town itself is not a business developer. I also want to point out, we are governed by the laws and that if someone comes forward with a site plan review and their business plan, which again, Planning Board has nothing to do with, as a nonprofit entity, they can go anywhere they want in town. Doesn't matter how we vote on this article. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address for the record, please.
I should say State House. Oh, did you call me?
Yep, you're on. Floor is yours.
I'm so sorry, I love you, but I was, I was next. I was waiting.
Ma'am, you've already spoke. I'm going to, I'm going to recognize the representative. Everyone, call into order. I'm calling to order. If you spoke once, I have the authority to recognize somebody else who's at a microphone who hasn't spoke. Going to call on the representative and then I'm going to go to the lady next and that's going to be your second time speaking.
And I'll, and I'll leave you brief. First of all, I'm for the article. I support the article because as I feel that this is not a ban on detox centers, it's not a ban, it's just shifting the zoning. I worked on this issue almost daily. In fact, yesterday, we talked to UMass Medical about trying to get a Wilmington youngster okayed for a liver transplant, but since he had some cocaine in his background, they had turned him down, but we're working hard on it. And I'll say it again, I'm for it and big, big reason is, it's obvious to everyone sitting here, I would think, that the people in town are overwhelmingly in favor of this article. So it's an issue that I work with, it's an issue that I work with on, almost on a daily basis and I don't think this would do anything to impede the construction of detox centers. All you're talking about is moving the zoning and to me, that makes sense. I represent Tewksbury also, maybe in Tewksbury did feel differently. And someone mentioned there are 75 beds available at the Tewksbury Hospital. Believe me, they're not there. They're not there. I think a woman got up and explained why she felt they wouldn't be there and they're not. So once again, so that there's no question, I support the article. I support it wholeheartedly. I think it makes an awful lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative. Now I'm going to give the floor to the lady out back who is waiting. Thank you. It's your second time speaking.
Thank you. I want to also say I support this article. This is ridiculous, we're talking about a few miles and someone talked about being ostracized because they're on the side of, outside on the outskirts of town. I took skating lessons there when I was a kid in one of these industrial areas. I wasn't ostracized because I wasn't at Rustica because we didn't have it. There's no such thing as ostracizing because it's a location that we need, we need space. Someone earlier talked about what happens when someone goes to withdrawal and they were, they were losing their faculties. Is that what we want people to see across from Eli's when I'm going in there to get food? I don't think that's safe. Someone else talked about addiction and having someone come out and meet their dealer. That is my concern. I'll be very honest, my concern is when someone comes out of that, if they don't have anyone else to call, who are they going to call? They're going to call their dealer, "Hey, come pick me up." And they're going to be all more than happy to meet that person there because it's business, it comes down to money. That's one point I want to make and I encourage everyone, there's no reason, it's, it's a few miles. Someone said they couldn't get a ride? I mean, I'll, I will offer in front of all these witnesses, if people need help, that's what we should be focusing on, how to get people there, not if they can walk to the facility from a train station. My second point is, I think everyone in this room with your attention and your commitment to being here today, we all need to focus on the town's leaders and, and what they're doing to bring in other commerce. Why, why are, why are we focusing on bringing in detox centers? Why aren't we focusing on bringing in builders who can build affordable 55-plus housing so that my family can live in the same house?
Ma'am, ma'am, I was going to call you to order. I, I understand what you're trying to say, but we're going to keep it determined in the article about zoning bylaws. And we're not talking about business plans.
Fine, as far as zoning, that, that's my position and those are my concerns and again, people are still trying to divide everyone and saying that we're, we're not. Just why not a few miles? I mean, really? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen down front, state your name and address for the record, please.
David Hunt, 301 Middlesex Ave. Can I make a motion to vote?
Yeah!
Sir, there's no order, order. There's no motion to vote. The only motion you can make at this time would you?
Move the question.
It would be to move.
Can I move the, can I move the question?
So just so, the motion on the floor from the gentleman up front is to move the question. Before I ask for a second, I want to tell everyone what that is. If you move the question and it's seconded, that'll effectively end debate and it's, and that motion, it's a subsidiary motion, is not debatable. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion seconded. Everyone, take your seats, please. Point of information from Selectmen Kyra.
Just a point of clarification that I heard earlier. On Waltham Street, is that zoned a general industrial? So Waltham Street is zoned general industrial, which is located near Eli's in 362 Middlesex. So that does not prevent a detox or a nursing home from going in there, which is what I believe the majority is trying to prevent. So just so you realize that there can still be that sort of facility in your area.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to put it to a vote. We're going to put it to a vote. I'm going to have the tellers take their places. This is a two-thirds vote. I want to do it with this teller, so can I call the tellers to all their positions, please? Ladies and gentlemen, again, this is a subsidiary motion to end debate and move the question. You're not voting on the article itself right now. What you're voting on is to end debate and if this vote is affirmative, we will take another vote after that, so a subsequent vote, which would be the second vote, would be to vote on the actual article itself. Does everyone understand that?
Yes.
Any confusion, just let me know. If you are in favor of ending debate and moving the question, please signify by rising in your seat. I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to do that. Everyone can sit down. The moderator is going to call, that is a two-thirds vote to move the question. Now, the maker of the main motion, when a question is moved, which is going to be Mr. McCoy, shall have an uninhabited 10 minutes to address this body. So Mr. McCoy, the floor is yours for 10 minutes.
I won't take the full 10 minutes, I think I should just leave, but I'm going to take two minutes. I want to thank the FinCon for unanimously supporting Article Two. That needs to be stated. Even though the Planning Board voted three to two in disapproval, two members voted in the opposite direction to support the article, even though it defeated. That needs to be noted. So you were one swing vote from getting the support from the Planning Board. That way you know. I'm going to take a couple of minutes, that's all I'm going to do and I'm not going to take the 10 minutes. But it all comes down to is we need to address zoning bylaws. Here is, every 10 years, the Board of Selectmen appointed a member of the Board to go over the bylaws and I was appointed by the Wilmington Board of Selectmen to be the liaison. Here's a bylaw on the book under, and it exists, it exists today and the whole point is, we need to look at zoning. Bathing, this is from the 50s, folks. Section 11, "No person shall bathe between the hours of 12 o'clock midnight and 6:00 a.m. in any waters of this town or any time in a state of nudity, in places exposed to public view or in immediate sight of the occupants of any dwelling." Here's the best part, folks. "A police officer shall have the right of arrest." Do you think that's a bylaw we should keep on the books or should we change it?
Change it.
Okay. In closing, let me just say this real quick. In closing, we're not trying to run people out of town when it comes to drugs, alcohol and substance abuse issues. On the contrary, we want to be sure people in town get help. We understand the national opioid epidemic and even more so how it affects everyone in our community. Admitted addicts and recovering addicts are all over Facebook saying that addicts are your brothers, your sisters. your brothers, your sisters, your friends, your children, your parents, your neighbors, and even your medical professionals. If we are so overrun with these drug users, there will be a need for a drug detox center in every neighborhood, and according to the existing zoning bylaws, they will be allowed. Or, we can satisfy this large need in a bigger and more expansive way in a commercial district that will accommodate not only neighborhoods today, it will also come down to this. We all have a heart. We all wanna... We all care. We all want to see a drug detox facility come to Wilmington. But the only issue that there has ever been was one word, the location. That's it. And I will... And I'll just say, I hope everybody votes for Article 2, yes. Wilmington families first, Wilmington neighborhoods forever.
Thank you very much. For everyone that is standing on the side, if you want to vote, you have to find a seat. Even if you're not gonna vote, I ask that you please find a seat if you're standing up anywhere in the auditorium. So if you're standing up anywhere in the auditorium, I ask that you please take a seat. And I ask that the tellers please take their positions. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now gonna take a vote on Article 2. Article 2, Planning Board recommended disapproval, Finance Committee recommended approval. If you are for the passage of Article 2, please signify by standing in your seats. If you're for Article 2 passing, please stand. Please remain standing. You may be seated. If you are opposed to the passage of Article 2... Hold on, actually, hold on one second, people are still going to their seats. Everyone can please remain seated until we complete the vote, I really appreciate it. If you are opposed to the passage of Article 2, please signify by rising in your seat. The votes are 366 on the affirmative, 62 on the negative. The motion passes. Article 2 passes.
I move for reconsideration.
So gentlemen up back?
I move for reconsideration. John Goggan, 28 Indian Road.
So I have a motion for reconsideration on the floor that requires a second. Do I have a second on the motion for reconsideration? Mr. Goggan, first of all, how did you vote on that one?
I voted for the measure.
And what was your reasoning behind calling for reconsideration? Do you have any new information that would lead you to change your vote? Any other information that would have come to mind which would lead you to change your vote?
I still have some doubts on...
Can you finish?
Yeah.
You still have some doubts, but you voted in favor.
Yes.
Do you have any new information which would lead you to vote otherwise? Or do you think your vote was ill-advised?
I would say no.
So that motion is out of order. Move on to the next one. We're gonna move on to Article 5.
Excuse me. Christine Hackton, Pinewood Road.
I've actually already moved on to Article 5. I didn't recognize you before I moved on to Article 5.
I was standing here at the same time as him.
Please be seated, I moved on to Article 5. Next person who speaks from their seat, I'm gonna call you to order, and if you can't speak from your seat, I'm gonna ask you to leave the auditorium, please. Article 5, again, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, when we pull Article 5, Articles 3, 4, and 5 are so closely related, that Articles 3, 4, and 5 are gonna be taken up in conjunction together. So we're gonna start with Article 3. And Article 3 is on the second page of the Warren booklet today. To see if the town will vote to amend the Wilmington zoning bylaw to prohibit marijuana establishments in all zoning districts by amending Table 1, Principal Use Regulation to include 3.7.2 marijuana establishments as follows. 3.7.2 marijuana establishments, no, 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 and R. And adding a new section, 3.7.2, as follows. "Section 3.7.2 marijuana establishments prohibited pursuant to Section 3 of Chapter 94G of the Massachusetts General Laws, all types of marijuana establishments as defined by Section 1 of Chapter 94G of Massachusetts General Laws, and as many as otherwise be defined by Massachusetts law or regulation, including without limitation on marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, on-site consumption and business locations, and other type of licensed marijuana businesses in the conducting of any such activity for commercial purposes which may ever be used shall be prohibited within the town of Wilmington. This prohibition shall not be construed to affect medical use of marijuana as expressly authorized by provisions of Chapter 1, Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012 and 105 CMR 725, or take any other action related thereto." Do I have a motion, Mr. Sorrentino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend Wilmington zoning bylaws to prohibit marijuana establishments in all zoning districts by amending Table 1, Principal Use Regulation to include 3.7.2...
And Mr. Sorrentino, is your motion read exactly as it is on the Warren booklet?
Yes, it does, Mr. Moderator.
I will take that as the main motion. Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Before I open it up for discussion, back to Mr. Sorrentino, I ask if you're pleased if you're leaving the auditorium, if you do so quietly and orderly, as we still have some business to conduct here today. Mr. Sorrentino?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This is just to be consistent with not allowing recreational marijuana dispensaries in town. And I want to direct to the Planning Director.
Thank you very much. We're gonna hand the floor over to the Planning Director Valerie Gingrich, who is actually gonna speak on Articles 3, 4, and 5 as they interplay with each other, she's gonna give a brief overview, and then we'll open it up for further discussion.
Thank you, Valerie Gingrich. I'm the Planning Director, Director of Planning and Conservation. Here to give you some background on Articles 3, 4, and 5. Article 3 is proposing to prohibit marijuana, recreational marijuana, commercial establishments in all zoning districts in town. Article 4 is prohibiting marijuana establishments in all of the town by the inhabitants bylaw. So the first one is through the zoning bylaw, the second one's through the inhabitants bylaw. And then Article 5 is proposing to extend the moratorium that we have currently. So I'm gonna explain all of that in a little bit more detail. Last year, the town voted during the election on Question 4, which was about recreational marijuana. The town overall voted no on Question 4. It wasn't a huge margin, but it was a no vote. So it was... The town's vote was against recreational marijuana last year. This year, at our annual town meeting last May, the town approved a moratorium, and what that does is it temporarily prohibits marijuana establishments in town. And we asked that we sort of be given more time to figure out how to regulate this new use. So that moratorium prohibits the uses through the end of June of this coming year. So the timeline that the state has with this use is that they have established the Cannabis Control Commission already. That commission is supposed to come out with regulations in March, and then in April, they'll start taking applications for marijuana establishments. So that's sort of the timeline that's going on. June licenses for marijuana establishments would be issued. So a little context for you all, other surrounding towns have voted to prohibit marijuana establishments. That includes Burlington, Woburn, North Reading, Redding. Andover has a similar prohibition in front of their town body. And normally, you aren't really allowed to outright prohibit zoning uses in zoning. You have to allow it at least in some place, right? So this is a little bit potentially of an exception, where other towns have outright prohibited it, and those towns also voted no on Question 4. So what we're proposing today is to prohibit the use through zoning and through the general bylaw, Article 3 and 4, because the town overall voted no on Question 4. And the fifth article is to extend the temporary ban on it through the end of 2018, so that we have a little bit more time to figure out what to do with that use if the prohibition fails, or if it's not approved by the Attorney General's office. So it gives us a bit more time as a temporary ban to figure that out. And I'm happy to take any questions through you.
Thank you very much, Valerie. Further discussion? Further discussion down front to the gentleman at the front microphone. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Burnham, 406 Woburn Street. We have to consider the question about money and financing. In the past, when prohibition of alcohol ended back in the 1930s, many towns went dry. Eventually, most of those towns decided to sell alcohol. In this case, all the towns around us, we've just been told, are going to be dry as far as marijuana goes. And I believe that we should at least consider or think about the amount of revenue that we would be foregoing by banning the sale of marijuana, and the attendant business revenue that would flow to other businesses in the town. I brought this up at the Finance Committee meeting, and I just bring it up now to ask everyone here to think about the possibility that this could be a good move, would be not to ban marijuana sales, but to let them proceed in the town of Wilmington because of what it would do for our town finances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
My name is Carolyn Finn. I live at 37 Lawrence Street in Wilmington. I don't really know how I feel about the sale, retail-wise, of marijuana in this town, and I understand that there are concerns about that. However, I do know that the town of Wilmington has quite a bit of industry and quite a bit of commerce, and that historically, we have been seen as pro-growth and pro-business. I am concerned about the pieces of the article, I believe it's in Article 3, that really seem to eliminate the opportunity for industry such as production and research that seems to me anti-growth. Testing facilities, cultivating, product manufacturers. That concerns me, because I feel like we need to be open to new business, new commerce, new industry, or at least, I'm not saying necessarily approve it, but be open to it, because that helps our tax base, and that helps our residential tax base as well by being a pro-growth community. And I would just be concerned about making it so restrictive. I don't know what other kinds, all the different kinds of industry and commerce that exist right now in Wilmington. Maybe morally, I'm not crazy about all of them. I don't really know. But do I really want to cut off a potential avenue for growth for the town? That's my point.
Thank you very much. Down front over here, name and address for the record, please.
Motion to vote? Do I just say that?
That's actually out of order right now. Only because it's at the discretion of the moderator, and I see people who... We've only had one person speak, so I'm gonna let Mr. Goggan speak. If he doesn't have anything else, that might just end debate itself. Mr. Goggan, do you have anything else to say?
Yes, I do. I think with the other towns having prohibited at this point, and we don't know what the Attorney General's gonna do, it seems fair to extend the prohibition. And like we talked about earlier, we can revisit the bylaws and amend the bylaws if, you know, we find a, you know, find a situation where we do want to allow a retailer, or maybe someone has an industrial use, you know. Or again, as far as I know, there's no prohibition against medical marijuana. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, people who rely on it for, you know, medical purposes will still be able to, if such a dispensary was set up, I guess we'll have to be in the doctor's zone or something. Anyhow, that's my point. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Jeff, do you have anything to say? I saw you grabbing a microphone. Representative Misselli out back, then I'm gonna come to you, sir, down front.
We've had extensive discussion on this in the legislature, and a lot of the surrounding towns have voted not to allow it, not to allow the sale. I am warning this community, the Attorney General will uphold the action that these towns have taken. To think about, gee, what could we gain from sales, what could we gain from selling some of this product, is foolhardy. The drug problem is rampant. I'm not trying to be... shake my fist on it. I would do this. As far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't even consider it. We should vote it, as I said, to prohibit it once more and let that stand, but to even have a discussion about what we could gain as far as revenue is concerned, is absolutely nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir down front, I think before I heard you say you were looking to move the question, but I see no one else in debate, so that would require two votes. So if there's no other debate, I can just put it right to a vote. If you... Okay. So seeing no further discussion, I'm gonna put this to a vote, okay? We're putting to a vote Article 3. Article 3 is being put to the vote, seeing no further discussion. Planning Board has recommended approval. Finance Committee has recommended approval. This is a zoning bylaw, which has a two-thirds approval, and seeing not much discussion, we'll try it first with a voice vote, and if that is challenge or divisible, I will then seek a standing vote. So at first, if you are in favor of Article 3, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
If you are opposed, say no.
No!
The town manager has just asked, or had questioned relative to a zoning article being needed to submit it to the Attorney General's office, and due to the delicacy of Articles 3, 4, and 5, it is within the authority of the town moderator to call a two-thirds vote, but because it will be submitted to the Attorney General, it might be prudent to be able to submit that two-thirds vote in writing and say that we actually took it. So we're actually gonna retake the vote, and we're just gonna take it in a different fashion, we're gonna do a standing vote, so I ask the tellers to please take their positions. Everyone, take your seats. If you are in favor of Article 3, please signify by standing. Please remain standing until all votes are counted. Please remain standing until all votes are counted. Please be seated. Yeah, so everyone just remain seated while we, the tellers get back into their positions. If you are opposed to Article 3, please signify by rising in your seat. Please remain standing while all votes are counted. Thank you. Seeing all votes in, you may be seated. The votes are 300 in the affirmative, 35 against. Uh, Article 3 passes. We're now going to move on to Article 4, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Wilmington inhabitant bylaws by adding a new section 55 to Chapter 5 entitled prohibition of marijuana establishments as follows. Section 55, prohibition of marijuana establishments pursuant to Section 3 of Chapter 94G of the Massachusetts General Laws, all types of marijuana establishments as defined by Section 1 of Chapter 94G of the Massachusetts General Laws, and as may otherwise be defined by Massachusetts law or regulation, including without limitation on marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, onsite comp, uh, consumption and business location, all the types of licensed marijuana businesses, and the conducting of any such activity for commercial purposes by whichever name used, shall be prohibited within the town of Wilmington. This prohibi, prohibition shall not be construed to affect medical use of marijuana as expressly authorized by the provisions of Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012 and 105 CMR 20, 725, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Shampoo.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town of Wilmington inhabitant bylaws by adding the new section 55 to Chapter 5 entitled prohibition of marijuana establishments as follows.
And is your motion read the same as it does the Warren booklet?
It does.
I will accept that as the main motion. Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval. Planning Board recommends approval. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, we're going to put this one to a vote. This is an inhabitant bylaw, so it's only a majority vote. I will do so, um, by a voice vote, unless it's you... Okay, we'll do so by a voice vote. All those who are in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Voted. Article 4 passes. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 3.9.4 of the town of Wilmington zoning bylaw to extend the temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments by six months through December 31st, 2018, to allow the town time to study, reflect, and decide on how to govern the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishment operations, and the number of marijuana establishments consistent with Chapter 94G of the General Laws and the regulations of the Cannabis Control Commission by replacing June 30th, 2018 with December 31st, 2018, so that Section 3.9.4 shall be amended to read as follows. 3.9.4 expiration, the Section 3.9 shall be in effect through the end of December 31st, 2018. Mr. Sorrentino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the Wilmington zoning bylaws, Section 3.9.4, to extend the temporary moratorium...
Is your, uh, motion read as it appears on the Warren booklet?
Yes, it does.
I will accept that as the main motion. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'm going to put this out to a vote. Again, this is a two-thirds vote, and it has to be submitted to the Attorney General's office, so we're going to do a standing vote, um, for, uh, this is again for practicality purposes. Uh, it seems a little monotonous, but it needs to be done so we can submit it to the Attorney General's office. So if you are in favor of Article 5, uh, passing, which again, the Planning Board recommends approval, Finance Committee also recommends approval, please do so by sta, uh, standing in your seat. Please remain standing for one more minute. Still some votes being counted. You may be seated. Give the tellers a moment to get back to their places. All those opposed to Article 5 signify by rising in your seat. You may be seated. 268 to 15, Article 5 passes. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, with no further business being before, uh, this assembly today, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Voted. Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy holidays.